Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting in May. Appreciate everyone being here today. We had a pretty good crowd here in the council chambers. And those of you who are watching us on our Electric City Television, our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Tony Stewart and respects to the flag will be laid by Councilmember Beatrice Thompson. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to give you thanks for the many blessings that you bestow upon this community. We ask that you be with our police and our firemen as they work hard to keep this community safe, and we ask that you keep them out of harms way. We also ask that you bless the other city employees who work very hard every day to make this city beautiful and vibrant. And last but not least, we ask that you be with this elected body here before you tonight, that you would give us the wisdom to make the decisions that will be pleasing in thy name. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm very pleased tonight to be able to recognize my sororals from Anderson Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And I'm so glad you're here. At this time, I would ask that soror Glenn and Richardson would come and join me at the podium. These two sororities will tell you a little bit about what we're doing because this is Delta Days in the City of Anderson. And at this time, I would ask the mayor to come down and read a proclamation to recognize Delta Days and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. If you would, the proclamation reads, "In celebration of the 35th anniversary, whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is an organization of college-educated women who perform public service initiatives. Founded in 1913 by 22 women on the Howard University campus in Washington DC, this organization remains true to its mission of, one, promoting academic excellence, two, providing scholarship assistance, three, supporting the underserved, four, educating and stimulating participation in the establishment of positive public policy, and five, highlighting issues and providing solutions to problems in their communities. And the membership has expanded to become the largest African-American Greek-lettered sorority in the world with more than 900 alumni and collegiate chapters located in the United States and around the world. And whereas the Anderson Alumni Chapter will celebrate its 35th anniversary with a luncheon on May 18, 2013, and Congresswoman Fudge, past president of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, will be the honored guest and keynote speaker. And whereas the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is faithfully committed to the Five Points Service Program, economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement as established by its founders more than 100 years ago. And whereas members of the Anderson Alumni Chapter exemplify the spirit of their founders through their roles as educators, advocates, and activists, both professionally and voluntarily, and endeavor to improve the quality of life and overall well-being of their communities. And whereas the organization's missions, programs, benefits, our community through providing food to citizens at the soup kitchen, donating over 1,400 books to children and students, donating over $150,000 in scholarships, health and wellness initiatives, political forums, voter registration activities, and engaging in charitable giving at home and abroad. And whereas the City of Anderson is pleased to congratulate the members of the Anderson Alumni Chapter on this milestone anniversary, and salute all members of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated in honor of the 100th anniversary of the sorority. Now, therefore, I, Terrence V. Roberts, along with my fellow councilmembers, do hereby proclaim May 19 as Anderson Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Day, and urge all citizens to join me in thanking them for their support and dedication, and wishing them the very, very, very best in their endeavors. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
We would just like to say thank you to Mayor Roberts and the members, the women and men of the City Council for recognizing Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We are very excited and happy about Anderson and the things that we are doing in our service area, and we would just like to thank you for this honor.
Thank you.
The minutes of our April 22 meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any. Do I have a motion to approve? First by the mayor pro tem, second by Mr. Stewart. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes of April 22 passed unanimously. We have one item of old business, and that item is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1502 Bab Street and 2009 through 2015 Bryson Street from R-15 Single Family Residential to R-5 Single Family Residential. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and council, I hope it would be in order to welcome back former Mayor Richard Shirley and his mother and father. His parents, I think, own this property. You referred it at the last meeting to the Planning Commission, and that was on April 23 at that year meeting. The Planning Commission, after unanimous recommendation by the staff, approved it on May the 7th. So it is back before you today to rezone this and make it a conforming use. If you remember, this was one piece of property with five buildings or houses on it, and the owners wanted to subdivide that and make them all a single-family lot. So this accomplishes that, and it's good for us and good for the owners. We'd recommend to you on first reading.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, comments? Mr. Chapman?
I take it we're secure that they have individual water taps and sewer taps feeding these because with it being on one piece of property, I didn't know if it had one.
They do. For whatever reason, they were built on one lot, but they all are tied into the city water and the city sewer.
Individually?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all.
Good. Any other questions? Was anybody in the audience or at the Planning Commission meeting? Everybody good?
May I move that? We approve this on first reading.
Second. First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. It passes unanimously on the first reading. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items of new business, and the first item is request consideration to purchase computers for the Anderson Fire Department Update Incident Management Team. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and council, we have three members of our fire department, the chief, assistant chief Randy Bratcher, and Adam Zinoni. A little bit in the background on the Anderson Fire Department Upstate Incident Management Team, this is quite an honor for our community. This is a Type III Incident Management Team. It's funded through the Homeland Security Grant and administered by SLED. Anderson is one of four communities in South Carolina, one of only four in South Carolina that hosts a management team. Florence, Aiken, Somerville are the other three. And what these are, they're intended to support local jurisdictions in South Carolina that are confronted with long-term events. You may remember not too long ago, the Graniteville Train Incident, and our team did respond there. They could go further depending on the incident. So there is a lot of highly specialized training that comes with these grants, and the nice part is because we hosted those people who are the most qualified are right here in our community to help us, but also help our neighbors. The grant, over time, has purchased a good bit of equipment for the fire department, not only on incident management, but also that can double its fire department uses. This piece is actually for eight computers. They're fully compatible with the city's computer system, Dale's, under state contract. I did have a couple of questions earlier from councilmembers because they are a little more expensive than ones that we would normally buy for office work use. These are specialized, and they are what we call semi-rugged. There is a rugged one that the military uses. This one's kind of the next level, and they do come with some specialized carrying equipment to make sure that as we move about on incident, they can hold up. We would recommend that you approve the eight of those purchased under state contract. Be 100% reimbursed by SLED, $26,818.60. And again, our team's here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. Any questions to Chief Horn and his folks?
Make a motion that we approve these eight computers.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by the mayor pro tem. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously. New computers, chief. Thank you for what you do.
Always good to get grant money.
Yep. Our next item of new business is request consideration of a contract amendment by Trail Corporation for the downtown park. Mr. Moore?
I'll take the first stab at it, but C. Arlene and some members of the Trail team are in the audience to...
You keep looking back, and nobody's coming forward?
I asked the chief if they want to come forward. I said, "If any questions, don't come." So, seriously, the Downtown Committee reviewed this a couple of meetings ago, and as we usually do, we send it out to the council via email, but it is a little more complicated than a lot of times that can be communicated in email. But what this is, if you remember, there's a design bill contract with Trail for the downtown park, and they are, there was a guaranteed max, G-Max we called it, but what we're talking about today is these are some change orders that the city wants and is requesting. So let me get in the way of a little bit of background. You've made one change order since we got the original contract, and that was for $138,251 back last year, and that was for the interactive fountain jets with LED lighting and integrated music. You probably remember that one. Otherwise, we're hoping for to come in under budget and have some savings to pay for these. Now, the two things that we've talked to you about and need you to actually officially approve tonight, number one is the street scape. If you remember, originally, the street scape was directly in front of the park, not end to end. So you directed us to see if we could get some help from the Anderson County Transportation Committee, and I'm pleased to say that they did. Ordered a grant for $43,624, and so now the project will be expanded to mill, pave, put standard curb gutter and sidewalks all along that side of East Whitner from Main to McDuffie. So, once you enter that area, the whole park. That amendment is $95,500. And again, you have $43,624 from the Anderson County Transportation Committee. The second piece, and this is a small piece for Trail, but we want to put nine security cameras that will give us the opportunity to monitor that by the police department. These are the standard Wildfire cameras that we, or the city is using in all of its parks. Now, the cost is, for the cameras, is $23,600 from 617 from Wildfire, but the amendment you'd be approving tonight is $7,450, and that would be for Trail while they're on the project to put the conduit wiring, mounting pole for the camera installation, and the cameras to be installed by Wildfire. So, in summary, the $95,500, the $7,450 would be the change order to the contract and bring it to $102,950. And then, again, the cameras. So now, your G-Max contract is $2,943,098. And Lynn and Arlene were kind enough in your executive summary to really give you sort of a budget or cash flow. With the grants and other transfers that you approve, like stormwater and some general fund for outfit for the shell, we're going to be about $44,000 that we hope to recover in the savings. I mean, again, talking to our Trail team, they're very optimistic that nothing's out of the unusual, and we can save some money. But, if not, so you'll know your current TIF balance for the downtown is where we said we would come from if we didn't have the savings. The balance is $350,000. The revenue going into that each year is $850,000, so we're in good shape there. And then, the third option, which I don't think will be necessary with that amount of money unless you made some changes for something significant, is the hospitality balance is $1.7 million. That's the cash in the bank account, and then you have $2,080,000 coming into it on a regular basis. So, that's the project. Arlene, or Brian, anything else you or your team would add?
Do we anticipate any other changes?
Do we expect any others? I don't think so. I mean, you have changes we anticipate?
Not at this time.
No. Again, the two we've made are to upgrade the water lighting feature, which, I mean, the council certainly supported, and then this was an opportunity to really get that street. Well, we're going to pave it anyway, so this was an opportunity to get it paved end to end and the sidewalks on that side completely redone.
I think probably, we had a pretty detailed meeting, I think, Mr. Harbin, myself, Don...
I think Mr. Curvin.
And Mr. Curvin was there. And we feel fair, as a committee, we feel fairly good in addressing Mr. Stewart's. We asked some tough questions in regards to any more change orders, and they really think, hopefully, we're very close to the end of this project, Brian. And, but hopefully, as we get closer to it, that'll definitely be taken care of. Mr. Roberts?
Arlene, did we upgrade our electrical to a 400 amp meter? Or electrical system?
For the kitchen?
No, for the whole facility out there. Especially for the stage area and all that. If you get, if you get any big band, let's say, for instance, Marshall Tucker Band, just to pick one, you're going to need that much electricity to operate it.
You have a new panel set down there at the stage.
Yeah, we had talked about that before, but I hadn't heard any more about it since then.
Panel, there might actually be a six-hundred amp panel.
Okay. That'd be great. I know you put in extra conduit. I remember you saying something about that.
That's right. We have specific breakers for anything that might be unforeseen. We don't know about, not necessarily Marshall Tucker in particular, but along that same line. And we also have a secretary going upstairs to the upper level of the plaza as well.
It takes a lot of amperage to run all that stuff that they bring, all the equipment.
From what we know...
Takes about a minimum of 400 amp.
We have plenty.
Good. Do me a favor, Brian. Would you come to the mic? I hate to do you, but you probably got a couple more questions. Mr. Chapman?
I just wanted to make sure we clarify that, I think the paper had misquoted a little bit and put that we were paving Main and McDuffie, but it's between Main and McDuffie. We're only doing Whitner.
That's correct.
Good. Anything else?
Only the sidewalk on the park side at this time.
On our side, yeah.
Mr. Harbin?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that the changes that we've done, I think, have been initiated by us. I mean, there hadn't really been change orders that, you know, that Trail, you know, has done.
Good point.
And the third thing, the one more quick thing was, the only other, to answer a little bit to Stewart, the only other thing that we, Mr. Stewart, that we talked about was possibly putting some type of cover at some point in time over the stage, so that possibly could be a change order down the line.
And overall, I think this is, we're investing a lot of money into this park, and everybody's looking forward to it, so we may as well make it top of the line and add these additions. So I think this is going to only enhance what we've done already. So, everybody's excited about this park. When's it going to open? So, when it does, I think it'll be something that Anderson, the City of Anderson and the citizens will be really proud of.
Mr. Stewart?
Just one quick question regarding the cameras and the wiring of the cameras. And I sit on the Recreation Committee, and we just got finished doing some in the Lindley Park area, and I think, you know, the average cost was around $2,800 bucks for the cameras and the wiring and all. This is like $3,800. Are these cameras light? What do you attribute that average cost being more than what we just got finished doing in Lindley Park?
Mr. Stewart, I'd have to go back and look. Generally speaking, the cameras, about $2,700 or $2,800 each on the camera. So, that would seem to be in line with the purchase of the cameras. And I'm sure, depending on the site, what's required in the conduit and all, but I don't know that I could compare that. I'll go look. I'll be glad to put it together for you.
I just didn't know, you know, if it's having to run more wiring, or, you know, your mounting on poles is a different mount where we're mounting down there versus mounting. I'm just trying to figure what the $1,000 per camera difference.
It's a little bit of both. I don't know exactly what the Wildfire stuff is costing, to be honest with you, but there is another pole that we have to set up on the upper level plaza. We have to get power up to that part as well. And then, the junction boxes where the power supplies are spread all over the site instead of down a central row, so we've kind of got to go out of the panel box, around the site, and back up into the, I'm going to call it the belt building. I hope everyone understands what I'm saying, but into the old belt building.
I understand.
That's some of it, and all that's in conduit inside the belt building, too. None of that's on the ground.
All right.
That's part of the problem. And we are setting a pole, too. That adds a little bit for a little bit we're doing.
Good. Any other questions, comments?
Make a motion that we approve this.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Thank you, Brian. And Arlene. Appreciate what you're doing. Our last item of new business is request consideration of a contract for West Benson Street, Street Scape. Mr. Moore?
Again, along the lines that we talked about a few meetings ago, as far as this whole downtown area, we also, and I'd like to thank Chris Eberhart's here, and him and Maurice and their staff, putting together applications for the Anderson County Transportation Committee. In this case, we got an advance award of $36,000 from them, and that was to mill and pave Benson Street between, in this case, it's between Murray and Main, up beside the new, or J. Peters and the new addition to the Blakely. That work is about done on that side by Mr. K., the developer, so now's a good time to be working this in. As you see, it's not until June the 3rd, so let him make sure he's pretty well out of there. We've already done the sidewalk. He did that as part of your economic development program. But anyway, this stretch includes two catch basin lids, milling and paving of all the asphalt areas, restriping of all the parking spaces, putting in the loading zone, as well as any other control, traffic control duties that might be involved in this process. Again, we've already constructed the, reconstructed the sidewalk, and there was some additional lighting along that section that you've already done. And so, $36,000 was the award. You can see we had four bids, a low bid from a local contractor who's done a good bit of work for us, and that's Pickens Construction, $25,416.65. Chris was pleased that it was under his estimate, but he also followed up to make sure that everything was included in the bid to his satisfaction, and it is. And of course, he's here tonight if you have any questions. So, again, this is a bid award for a grant, and we'd recommend that you award it to the low bid, $25,416.65.
The, this work's beginning in June, and are we giving in consideration of both streets, Whitner Street and Benson Street, traffic flow?
Chris, you want to help me on that one? The question is, this one in June, and when is Whitner going to be? I'm sure they've, we also have Church Street, too, if you remember, so Chris has it scheduled some way or another, so I'll let him address it.
Council, we had originally talked about yours coming in later in June or July, I believe it was. Ours was about a two-week project, but one of the savings on this was that Pickens was going to plan to try to mill and then pave on a Saturday morning when traffic's less, and that was, that saved us some money on traffic control from my initial estimate. But, as far as I know, I was thinking that project was going to be in July.
So far as East Whitner, we're ready to go as soon as we can get going on that one. From a traffic flow situation, we do not want East Whitner and West Benson closed at the same time, so we don't want them to be under construction at the same time. I believe, construction, we can start when for East Whitner?
Chris and I have to work out some details.
These two are going to work out some details.
We have to coordinate. There's some coordination going on with Chris, and we should be able to coordinate around what you're doing at Pickens, them both. That's the other piece of the puzzle that's still going to be done.
All right. Keep in mind the Main Street Car Show coming up about the second, third week in June, too, and that's going to be a big impact with that going on. I would hate to have all that work going on with that great event that happens downtown every year.
Long as we're thinking about it. Mr. Chapman?
The remaining $10,000 of that grant, what happens to it?
I knew you were going to ask that question.
I talked with Michael, and the, if we add any additional asphalt or concrete work, then we could add that if we had some sort of change order for any additional things, but we can't apply for that $36,000 to reimburse us for other items that we've already had that...
Normally, normally on the ACTC grants, you do all the work, you front the money, and then you submit the invoices to the Transportation Committee, and they reimburse you for your out-of-pocket costs. But if something unforeseen came up over this bid, $2,000, $3,000 for something we didn't figure in, then that would be eligible. Can't go do another street with it.
The other question I had was, because we noticed this on Calhoun Street, and we were thankful that it's been paved, but everywhere where the, where the roller trucks kind of made their turns, they basically tracked up and gotten rid of all the white lines, you know, where, that are crossing at all the cross, or intersections. I mean, is there, is there, so we don't have the same problem downtown, is there any, I guess, provisions put aside to try to repaint the...
This one includes all the repainting, and they may be still...
I'm talking about the intersections.
Yeah. They may be coming back on Calhoun.
Okay.
If they're not, we can get Jim Sims.
Yeah. Normally, that...
To keep it clean.
Yeah. I would think they're probably coming back.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve this, man.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Yes, very briefly. Mr. Moore?
Couple of things we've mentioned in, in looking, really, in this week, we have a couple of what I call budget overviews, just to kind of give you, hand out the budget books, give you a little insight in what we're looking at. And I don't mind saying today, there's no tax increases unless y'all change it, no water, sewer fee increases. So, even though we're still struggling in the economy, the budget overall looks pretty good. And then, so those are Wednesday and Thursday this week, and you know when you're coming. And then, we also have one next week.